Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For your record, I'm Perry Houston, Director of Planning and Community Development for Okanagan County. As you've indicated, you are in a continued public hearing, which was initiated by an action you took on April 1st of this year by adopting ordinance 2019-5, which adopted as interim controls the designation of Water Availability Study Area for those restricted areas surrounding the tributaries closed for their appropriation in WAC 173-548-150. Now, as required by 3677-95, or revised Code of Washington, you're required to conduct a public hearing on the adoption of those interim controls within 60 days. You opened the hearing on April 29th. We discussed the action you took, and you continued the public hearing to today, so we could consider additional language amending, or if you had better to say, suppose clarifying the legislative intent of the action you took. So what you have on your desk is an ordinance, which, if adopted, would do three things. One, it would leave the Water Availability Study Area designation in place in those restricted areas. It would remand the matter to the Planning Commission for their review and eventual recommendation, environmental review accompanying that. It would also adopt these amendments to 17A400-120. Now, you'll recall that feedback input, if you prefer, that we received prior to our last public hearing would lead one to believe there was confusion in terms of what your intent was. The language previous was subdivisions. No application for the subdivision of land pursuant to will be accepted was the original language. They questioned the term, rather, subdivision has different meanings depending upon where in the revised Code of Washington and where in Okanagan County Code and how it's applied. Your intent was that no application for any division of land, except for the exception cited, would be accepted. After additional, we reviewed the public input after additional consultation with legal, what you have in front of you for D is just expanded language. It still means that any application, rather than being accepted now, will not be approved. Now, the original intent of the prohibition against accepting the application was to prevent vesting, but that is a departure from the standard language of planning, if you will. So the attorneys have suggested you can accept the application, you simply won't approve that because you haven't been able to make the finding that adequate provision for potable water has been made, so the vesting issue goes away at the point that you've denied the application. It also allows a person who has made application and been denied, if that's the course that it takes, the opportunity for appeal. And as you know, almost any action or decision that is made should have some recourse for appeal. So, D, if amended, would now read divisions of land. No applications for the division of land pursuant to Okanagan County Code Title 16, including subdivisions, short subdivisions, large lots, large lot segregation, binding site plans, and exempt divisions in OCC 1604070 will be approved for property located in an overlay zone. Tense to say. It's just in expanded way to say what you originally intended to say. And then dropping down to four, there was some concern, again, based upon additional legal review, that the original language about an exemption where water, potable water supplies provided by a water right confused what would be the role of the county and the role of the Department of Ecology. Now, the original language was that the water right would be approved for such purposes by the Department of Ecology. This is an expansion of that language. It includes, in addition to water right, permit or certificate approved for such purposes by the Department of Ecology, including approval of any changes, transferred administrative divisions, or other amendments to the water right for consistency with the proposed division. Once again, says the same thing, just says it with more detail and in a manner that the legal review found more comfortable. I believe you can adopt this ordinance approving this amendment language under the banner of your current public hearing because its language, it was consistent with the original intent of the order, excuse me, of the code section as approved. We'll get to a discussion here in a moment of language, you recall, additional public in, or other public in, but suggested that additional mitigation language might be included. I'll show that to you. I don't believe that you should amend that under the banner of this particular public hearing. If you wish to take an immediate action on that, we can do so as an interim control. I can prepare an ordinance doing that, and then you can set a new public hearing, or you can remand that language to the Planning Commission as well for their review with the rest of the amendments to 17A400-120. Now, keeping in mind the actual amendment that initiated this whole thing was the 17A400-130, which was the actual designation of the Water Availability Study Area. So with that, as my introductory remarks, do the Commissioners have any questions?
The Commissioners certainly have the option of accepting additional testimony if you wish to do so. I don't believe you actually closed it, did you?
No, we closed public comment, but we left written in.
Ah, okay. I received no written comments.
So, I will close it, the staff will look like for the board. Do we have an ordinance number?
So it'd be 2019-8.
So, in that, so that ordinance does not have any of the extra language. That ordinance is exactly what is up there, and Exhibit A is exactly what Mr. Houston just showed us, correct?
I believe it is the exact same document.
Okay.
You note again that this doesn't further amendment to include any mitigation language.
Right.
It's strictly the clarifying language that you've just seen up on the board.
In light of the fact that this-
Second motion.
Okay, motion second, discussion. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Both saying aye. Motion carried, and we'll close the public hearing.
Before we depart from this subject, Commissioners, go ahead and put the mitigation language on the board.
Grab that clock, two minutes, please. Thank you.
Pull it right up, so there we go. So, this language has been under review and gone through a number of iterations, trying to capture at least what we believed the Commissioners were interested in. Now, this language would be universal in its application, it's not specific to RIA 48. The last action, of course, was specific to RIA 48. This would not be. And it started off as expanded language, Section 4, that didn't, mitigation plans, 73-548, met downstream flow rule, and WAC 173-549, Okanagan Instream Flow Rule is currently adopted and/or updated in accordance with RCW 9094. Now, 9094, of course, is the codification of ESSB 1691. Examples of mitigation measures may include and not be limited to water banking, use of storage, groundwater recharge, cisterns, et cetera. Now, again, my rationale for not proposing this as an amendment under our past public hearing process is it is different. It was not what we advertised in terms of the public hearing. It does, it does represent a departure from the original language of the ordinance, not to say good or bad, not my point, but if the Commissioners are interested in this language, or if you wish to review it some more, or if you wish to remand it to the Planning Commission, we can orchestrate the process accordingly. You do have the option of adopting this as an interim control, an interim amendment. We've set a new public hearing, and then depending upon your action there, remand it to the Planning Commission. How would the Commissioners like to proceed?
Actually, I moved to remand it to the Planning Commission so they can review it. They haven't seen it, right?
They have not.
Get that review.
Yeah, no, he cannot. You can.
Okay, for lack of a second, since I'm now taking over as the vice chair by default, for lack of a second, motions die.
Okay.
So, and I'm ready to make another motion, but that's-
Okay. But you're right, sir.
I hope you come back. I know, okay. You can do it.
So, I would move to remand this to the Planning Commission with some proposed amendments.
I second that motion.
Okay.
I don't know what you meant, sorry.
I know you don't. That's why I-
All favors are aye.
Discussion.
No more.
So, can we go up to the portion where it actually, where we would actually be reading? Okay, so division of land, no application for the division of land pursuant to OCC Title 16, including subdivisions, short divisions, large subdivision, binding site plans, exempt divisions, and OCC will be approved for property located in an overlay zone, except for, six would read, divisions where the applicant can demonstrate mitigation measures that offset the consumptive use. Okay, number one, that sentence right there is not a complete sentence because with the consumptive use of what? Okay, so I think it should say the consumptive use of water, just to be perfectly clear. And my question would be, in these areas where we're looking at this, are we going to allow mitigate, are we going to, are we going to contemplate mitigation for outside Because all that says is consumptive use. So, is that consumptive use of yard water? Is that consumptive use of purely in-house use? What are we wanting to look at in this?
Is the rest of this ordinance relative to clarifying this language? In other words, on number six, divisions where the applicant can demonstrate mitigation measures that offset the consumptive use, were you depending on other language in the ordinance to explain that?
I haven't prepared an ordinance adopting this yet.
I meant the rest of it.
So, certainly, an ordinance prepared to adopt this, be it on a remand to the Planning Commission or an interim control, would expand on those points.
Right. On the section that we're providing for in Title 16, is there any other language that's already adopted that clarifies it because what I'm, because we're not, we're looking at item D and the rest, in the Title 16?
I don't believe we have. Do you have the original ordinance that adopted 17A400 on your machine? It's the original, and I'm going by memory here, the original ordinance, of course, it drilled in on permit exempt wells. And I, and I want to say that it talked about-
This would be in a motion from me, for to remand this to the Planning Commission, but with some amendments and whatever discussion.
Okay. So, it's 17A400-130, right?
Now, 17A400-130 only lists those areas which are designated.
Right. I'm just kind of determined whether or not in the item D that we're amending right now in the context of the rest of the code, is it, does it explain this stuff, or is, or, because that, speaking to what Commissioner Hoover's pointed out, I was just curious as to whether or not the language in the rest of the code led us to this.
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
That's why I want to make sure that it's, when it goes to the Planning Commission, that it's as well written as we can get it so they have, they can deliver it on some of that.
I apologize, Commissioners, there should have, exceptions were all about.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that is, it sounds to me that's the language you want to drill in on.
Yes.
Okay, so, let's see if we have that.
You know what date that was?
Well, would have been, it would have been back in January or so, that the Planning Commission sent it back, and Commissioners adopted it.
Oh.
Go down to your, go down to your item mark, yeah, right there.
This is the actual section.
Well, that's what we're looking for. Oh, no, that's the code section. Well, okay, here's the code section, at least we can start with that.
So, well, let's go back up to the overlays to underlines, under ditto, plus research, and track processes, potable water supplies. Okay.
While you're looking at this, Commissioners, I can go find the ordinance very quickly and make copies of, do you already have it?
I have them all up here, I'm just not sure which one you're needing, because there was one done in 2018 regarding 17A400.
Oh, all right. It's earlier than I thought, I thought it was earlier this year. That would be the one, the ordinance that adopted 17A400 itself.
So that's ordinance 2018-10.
Okay.
And then there was another one done, interim land use controls, amending 17A400-130.
130, right. That's when the tonk, upper tonk, lower tonk, and tamrac spring was actually designated. So it's 2018-10 the ordinance we're looking for.
Okay.
That's the one that would have adopted the actual code section. That, in the recitals, would explain what you intended to accomplish.
But under, this is under special provisions, right? 17A400-120, item D, I know that's not-
Well, the, the language you're looking at would be an amendment to 17A400-120, it would add a new Section 6.
Right.
Which would be another exception.
Right.
To the prohibitions contained in-
That was part of the adoption criteria.
This would have to go up to-
Yes, it would, that's, that's correct. It's just, I mean, so what we're proposing here is to add language to clarify the lack of certain information, and I'm asking whether or not that information is actually already laid out in the code. In other words, I was actually thinking that maybe Perry knew what he was doing when he wrote this. I'm only kidding.
Well, you never know. Every once in a while.
Because it speaks to-
As you, as you read the ordinance and the code section it adopted, I guess in totality, to use that as a phrase, drills in a permit exempt well, and it identifies, or designed for you to identify areas where you don't believe you have enough information to determine as 5817110 requires that adequate provision for potable water supplies have been made, again, based on permit exempt well. So the exceptions found in 120 are, in part, mirror the exceptions in 5817040, your testamentary divisions, your cemeteries, things of that nature, but also consistent with the discussion, if you will, through ESSB 1691 and a variety of other forums, it also recognizes that there are some things that launch you out of the world of permit exempt wells, water bank, if you're in a municipal system, something of that nature. So what this would do is take it another step, and it's, it's another step in the discussion where you're still using permit exempt well, but you're putting the water back that you take out.
I understand that. The ordinance in the, in 17A400 speak to potable water supplies. They do not speak to outdoor irrigation, anything like that. And so, that being said, if we put a section in here, and it's construed as, okay, that's only mitigation for potable water supplies because that's what your entire section covers, it doesn't say anything in there about outdoor irrigation or anything like that, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Are we, are we wanting to try to mitigate for somebody who, not we, I shouldn't say that, are we looking for a scientific way to mitigate for not only the potable water use, but watering your lawn or garden?
True.
Because that is not contained in here.
Well, I, I get where you're going now, Commissioner, the, we have to go to the line, mitigation plans must not conflict with the intent of 173-548, met downstream, and of course, 173-549, and those are the only upstream flow rules we have in the county. And we're, we're back into that discussion. 548 doesn't really specifically allow outdoor irrigation with the two CFS reserves. Now, if you get into the background information, well, okay, fair enough.
I, because in the, in the glossary of terms, it specifically spells out, and I, I understand that the letter of the law is the letter of the law.
I'm just introducing discussion points here.
I appreciate that. That's why I want to talk about this.
And I guess you're saying, in terms of this discussion, I guess I would ask, what would the Commissioners like under the banner of mitigation?
And that was kind of my question also.
Well, first of all, I think the way I've read this, and haven't looked at it in the context of what Commissioner Hoover's brought up, but when I go up into the code, and the ordinance, adopting ordinance isn't going to help you when you're reading the code after it's adopted, so, but if we change that part of it, I think that we need to go back up further into the code and, and then address it, because all of a sudden, the irrigation issue pops up in this item six, and it should be spoken to earlier in the code.
The actual section.
Rather than just write it in this body.
Right, because I mean, and like, you know, if I buy a water right, and then I should be able to use it for outdoor irrigation. So I agree, I think that up there further, there should be discussion of what are we actually looking to try to do? Is it out, you know, is it simply inward house use only, or if somebody can come up with mitigation credits to have a yard, how should they be able to do that?
I mean, looking under the authority section, which arguably where maybe we should expand your meaning, if that's what you wish to do, it specifically cites, of course, 1927-097 that you're building permit requirement, and 5817110, that's your land division section of the RCW. Doesn't really talk about irrigation in either of those citations. Your building permit specifically cites potable water, your 5810 specifically cites potable water. So this would arguably be a spot if Commissioners wanted to expand.
Well, yeah, because you're expanding beyond ESSB 1691. Isn't that, isn't that correct?
Well, 944050, though, contains, I mean, has the language of a half acre lawn, garden.
Does.
Right. But 1691 is what-
So if that's, you'd have, you know, just the deal is, is it's a matter of construction. I mean, you have to address that beyond 1691 or change that reference to some degree to address the other piece down below, so, and if there's, I guess we have to, we have to talk a little bit about then the authority that we're using to do this, and then, and think that part through, because, you know, I, I wasn't thinking about that, this, these changes in that context when I reviewed the proposal.
And we, we do cite 944050, which of course is the permit exempt well statute. We could expand the sentence proceeding. We could expand the sentence proceeding. Uh, physical availability of groundwater drawn from permit exempt wells and used as defined in RCW ninety forty four oh five oh, or something to that effect. Which would open the door to mitigation for stock watering or the half acre lawn on commercial garden, or commercial uses for that matter. I mean, this, this is your code, of course.
Right, right.
So you can, you can apply it really as you wish to, so...
Just as long as it fits, you know, because this is what it was constructed for. And we got to make sure that the language is, um, understandable. We know what we're doing through that process, what the implications are. It's basically what I'm after. And, uh, so, um... So your motion in what we're discussing is, because we're still talking about a motion in a second, if I mean.
Yep, correct.
Included certain conditions and...
Correct.
And I can agree with that condition, but I think that we have to talk the condition through to understand what, and the motion is affecting. But I can, I can stick with it, because under certain conditions, when we, when we approve that, we just have to establish that it didn't take us too far, because we still have to decide what those conditions are, or, you know, perfect.
And we can vote on the motion, and we can vote it down, because I did move to, to transmit it to the planning commission with amendments.
Yeah.
Or we can, you know, look at some, some amendments, or we can, uh, we can vote the motion down and we can reconsider, uh, to have staff, um, develop their language in it.
You want to coffee the question? I, I agree with that.
So I'm back in charge.
You are.
We never really left you out of charge. Okay, any further discussion?
Very good. Name.
Name.
You didn't ask a question? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you're still in charge here.
Yeah.
So if I'm tracking the discussion accurately, what commissioners are looking for is, is less focus on potable water supply. To, to also bring in the discussion, the other things you can use a permit exempt well for.
It, it wasn't... Andy, I, I just want the mitigation for the stock watering and the, and the permit exempt well language to flow so that you can use your half acre lawn or your stock water. And that's all we're talking about right now for an amendment, isn't it?
Yeah, it wasn't less, less language of potable water. It was bringing in the other uses that permit exempt wells can...
Carelessly worded on my part, when, when potable water is obviously front and center of, of two major bodies in statute. But the, the question is one of expanding it under the banner of mitigation. In other words, you'd have to mitigate for more than your two hundred gallons a day, ninety percent goes back in the ground.
Right, I mean, I look at it as, like, if I have a small scale manufacturing plant or something in a closed basin, and I say, you know, I'm only going to use, you know, a hundred gallons a day of water, and so I'm just going to truck it in for my manufacturing plant, recycle as much as I can, you know, or whatever, I want to make sure that things like that are covered in these mitigation strategies, so that it's not just simply, um, that we're, you know, that we're going to mitigate for the potable water supply. Because I think there are, you know, ways that people can mitigate for the other, those other uses. So Perry, do you think you can, you could clean up, uh, not, not clean up, um, change language within the authority section? And then change the language down in the section D to meet what we're looking for?
I think that's where logically would lie. I might, I might buff up the purpose section as well. Just to, just to bring it around to the full discussion. We'd expand the authority section and then the mitigation language being proposed. I'll make that consistent with the language we put into oh two oh and oh one oh.
So remanding, remanding, kind of a, I don't know if remanding is the word, because they haven't seen it.
Transmit is probably more accurate. It never came from the planning commission. He can't send it back.
So, um, sending to the planning commission to refine it, um, to address particular issues of concern by board commissioners, seems to me is where we're headed.
As long as they know what the, I mean, as long as they know what we're talking about. So whether it goes in this form right here with a memo attached to it about our discussion. Or whether Perry takes a crack at initial language that gets closer to what we're looking at, and that way they can see it. It, it, I, I...
So either way, I mean, if, if we, um, send transmit this to the planning commission for their review and, um, and revision, if necessary. You have work to do with the planning commission.
I do. The, the, keeping in mind in terms of the process, the planning commission is going to see seventeen eight four hundred one thirty. Because you've adopted it as an interim control. So they have to see that, will have to do the environmental review for them to then make a recommendation, repeal it, leave it in place, uh, adopt it with revisions, whatever. And then that puts it in, assuming that they send it to you with a recommendation to adopt, that puts it in the code. But while we're at that process, they can review the mitigation language. They'll take a look at the language you've now adopted, um, in one twenty. All of that we can, we can box up, so they don't have to be separate steps when they go to the planning commission and look at the whole thing.
Which makes sense, because, um, it's really, um, we're developing something here that the planning commission's reviewing. And, you know, oftentimes, what we're reviewing comes from the planning commission. So, um, to, to make the improvements that we've discussed in the letter of transmittal, and you'll be working with the planning commission to prevent it. As long as we understand that, I'm happy with sending it to the planning commission to address the issues of, uh, because I don't have a problem with them developing the language. Perry's got to develop some language that makes sense and then some wordsmithing to make this thing work for us, to address the issues that you want addressed. I should say we want addressed, because if we agree that it needs to be looked at, then it goes to the planning commission to be developed into a, in essence, a, a piece of legislation that comes to us from the planning.
So I would, I would move to direct Mr. Houston to add language and change the language in section six to get closer to the discussion that we had here today.
I second that motion.
Okay, more from second discussion. Very good.
Aye.
Making sure I understood the intent of the motion. The commissioners want to see my proposed amendments before they go to the planning commission.
I would like to see, that was the intent of the motion.
Okay.
Right.
For me, it's going to come here and, that's where the buck's at, so.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, we don't have a study session next Monday, so I should be able to get it to you the Monday following that.
So when is your, so when would the, when's the planning commission's next meeting?
They won't see it until probably July, by the time we get through the SEPA process. I'll have to finish the checklist, put it out for their comment period. I don't think we can do that and hit the June meeting. So it'll probably be the July meeting.
Do you, do you find it necessary to do the SEPA process before they, you work with them on it?
Well, you can certainly, I, their, their meeting tonight's going to be pretty much review of the conferency plan.
Right, they won't have...
I don't see much room. And I mean, I'll, I'll give them a quick update in the actions that were taken today. There'd be nothing to say we couldn't in a, in a workshop, if you will, go over the amendment language while the SEPA process is unfolding. But I, I, I don't see any way they get their public hearing before July.
Well, yeah, no, no problem. I'm just thinking about them being able to have a look at it, um, developing something. Because you're going to have some more thoughts about this when you walk out the door.
Oh, undoubtedly, undoubtedly. No, I mean, and, and that's in essence what we're doing with the conferency plan. We're talking. We're not reviewing public input, obviously, because all we have so far is a scoping comment. They're reviewing it so they become comfortable with what it says. That way the, the comments have context when they look at the additional comments and take public testimony. My hope is it'll make it smoother. In the end, this can follow the same course. Uh, I'll bring the language back to you all. You can take a look at it and see if it's moving closer to where you want it to be. Uh, nothing to say I can't involve the planning, as we can involve the planning commission in that, uh, discussion as well. If nothing else, I'll send them what I send to you. So we could probably move, uh, with as much speed as possible. Uh, keeping in mind, at some point, the commissioners, you know, as a failsafe, if the commissioners become comfortable enough with the language, you always have the option of adopting the interim control.
Except for the, adopting the interim controls goes, it allows for more if we adopt the interim controls.
Well, I mean, the only, the only thing it does is, and again, it's all a question of time, when the commissioners wish to take their action. If we go through the normal course, if you will, the planning commission will review. I'm guessing their public hearing will be July. You'll see it back in the first part of August and can simply adopt it if that be your desire. They, uh, you can set your own public hearing if that be your desire. The, the other option is interim control. If there was another public hearing in the midst of it, but probably in the end, it'll be about the same. The only real difference is the, the effective date.
I think I would rather have the planning commission see it and kind of mull it over as well.
Yeah.
Then put in the interim controls.
Well, the interim, the interim controls, you know, in some senses, uh, I mean, the interim control is, uh, doing the applicant or potential applicant a favor in a sense, because it's a quagmire otherwise.
I make no recommendation. I'm just explaining options.
No opinions or anything, huh?
None whatsoever. Okay, understood. We will bring it back for another look, and I'll start the process of motion with the planning commission. Before we drop into item two, the conferency plan and all of that, I did send over to you a draft of a letter, uh, to Mr. Brown, Director Brown, Fish and Wildlife, regarding wolf delisting. Uh, I went through it and made sure it was consistent with the comments that you offered to US Fish and Wildlife in terms of the delisting of the wolf on the national level. But it is tailored more to the state issue.
I already read it in the email form, so.
I'm sorry?
Already read it in the email form.
Ah, okay.
Good to meet.
I move a direct step to put this on our letterhead for signature.
A second motion.
Motion, second discussion?
Yeah, it's, um, I think what we're asking here, you know, we're pointing out that, um, there's, there's scientific data that is still supporting wolves being listed, and there is, and it stated right in here is, there's, there's, um, also observations, if you will, that says differently. And obviously, the state's still going to use the science, but they have to take into account the fact that these observations, and this is the same with the deer population, as far as I'm concerned, for whatever reason, we see something different than may, the data may present. And that's why I support the letter to say, this is my observation. This is why we think this way. They still have to do what they have to do, I guess.
Well, even directors supporting the list, I mean.
And that, and, you know, clearly, we, we see reasons for that, so.
Right.
It's encouraging them to actually look a heck of a lot deeper into it than what they have.
Any further discussion?
Returning to your agenda, commissioners, item two, conferency plan update. As, uh, I mentioned a few moments ago, your planning commission does meet tonight, and they'll continue, uh, their review in, in study session, if you will. Uh, the draft that went out for public comment. So that's the bulk of what we'll cover tonight. I will cover some of the, the first impressions, if you will, out of the DEIS, and they requested that specific. The, the draft, a lot of impact statement continues on. I'm, I'm fighting analysis creep right now, because as I tear into one thing, I think, well, we should look at it from this angle, too. So, uh, I'll readily, readily acknowledge I'm having to yard myself back a little bit to keep it, uh, the EIS in scope of what we're reviewing here, which is a programmatic conferency plan. So, but it is moving along.
Well, as those issues arise, I mean, I mean, is, um, bring them for discussion. I mean, if they're, if you're laboring over some of them, maybe we should be talking about it.
No, fair enough. The, we brought up, for instance, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was now, the planning commission in their last discussion was looking for, uh, some economic analysis. So I, I took off on a fairly robust regimen of analysis, yarded that back, and I think, and hopefully, I've zeroed in on more what they were interested in, uh, which is already a part of the chapter on roads we're going to do. The cost of actually upgrading roads, especially primitive roads, if you go over that hundred ADT, uh, a day threshold. So I have some numbers for them on that. I pulled some numbers in terms of, uh, the job base and the, the correlation, if you will. I'm making there is, uh, and actually, let me back up a sentence. One of the challenges is going to be, we've had this discussion, is reconciling what could happen mathematically, if you will. And we'll get into that very discussion here in a moment, versus what has historically happened. How many lots can you make? How many houses do you build? Because the, the numbers are striking in their contrast. So trying to find as much information as we can without spending a year and a half doing this thing to try to inform that judgment call. It's a judgment call you will eventually make. Uh, so the EIS is simply going to provide information without necessarily drawing or even recommending any conclusions. This is what has happened historically. This is the economic forecast done by WSU. This is the mathematical possibilities. We'll try to get a handle on what the next twenty years might mean in terms of the buildout in Okinawa County. Obviously, that ripples through groundwater use, ripples through impacts to your, your habitat, critters, all of that. And, uh, to roads. Now, roads, uh, and this is another thing I'm kind of sorting through in my mind. RTPO or OCOG is, uh, commissioning that study. Obviously, we can't wait for that. We have a, a tighter timeline than that. So while there's temptation to just cite that as an up and coming event, trying to do some baseline analysis and then cite it. So we at least have enough to inform... so we at least have enough to inform a decision now. So those are the sorts of things I'm sorting through. Trying to keep from turning this into 500 pages and a year and a half's worth of drafting, so. The crew has already done the buildout analysis from a mathematical perspective. We'll go through and start backing up the Class As and those sorts of things. But even with that, and then this is part of the judgment, I guess, I have yet to make, even with that, the mathematical possibilities are quite striking. I mean, you got a lot of land in Okinawan County. And even with 20 acre lots, you can make a lot of lots out there. But with a mix of fives and, and one acre zoning, you can make a lot of lots. You saw the numbers in 49. Two hundred, some odd thousand potential new lots. Well, okay. A lot of those are driven by the 5,000 quarter foot zoning in the neighborhood commercial zone, which is one of the things that we'll talk about here in just a few moments. If you have some R1 zoning of places where perhaps it doesn't make a lot of sense. If you throw in the multiplier of the multifamily provisions in R1, 5, and 20, the numbers get pretty fantastic. Will any of that happen?
Well, would, would it happen and what, you know, I guess the question that comes to mind is, where's the need, what's the need? Where, what are we, what, what market are we satisfying here? What's the need? 20 years from now, it may be different.
True.
So that's the good thing about comprehensive plans is whatever we do today doesn't mean that that comprehensive plan just locked us into a roach scenario forever.
Oh, no. In fact, as you know, we've built in a five-year review in our comprehensive plan.
Well, hopefully, in five-year reviews, we can get them done in less than 20 years.
Well, hopefully, when the five-year review comes up, Angie will be more than ready to lead this process.
Yeah, but you know, and.
I'll be, I'll be up on the range.
The other point is, is that, you know, if, if we really think it through, I mean, you know, comprehensive plan amendments can, can happen in, as far as we have it set today, anytime, but because this isn't a growth management county, so people can come in and make, look at a development that nobody's ever looked at before and bring it up and, and attempt to change the comprehensive plan to fit that development. It's just something to think about.
Now, now, one of the things that commissioners have chatted about is some of the, the things in the zone code. Now, we're not reviewing the zone code, and I appreciate that. But there are some things that commissioners have suggested they want to look at before the comprehensive plan is done. What I'm handing out to you now is one of those things. Now, we looked up, Angie actually went through the minutes, and the whole discussion of the multifamily, the language in both rural one, rural five, rural 20 zones regarding multifamily, was apparently confusing at the time. Again, you recall, I wasn't sure whether that was a walkover some dual minimum requirement district or whether that was something new. It is something that they refined, the advisory group did, and I'm still not sure that the actual language in the code captures what they intended. Because I think what they were talking about was not that you could get five, five unit multifamily structures out there, but that you could have five multifamily units duplex on, so. But irregardless of even that, you're still faced with the question, is that a compatible land use activity in all areas across the rural one, rural five, and rural 20 zone? In past discussion, the commissioners have suggested that that is not a compatible use. It certainly begs the question whether under 9044050, you couldn't even put that kind of activity, that kind of intensity of development on a permitted example withdrawal. And arguably, if you're not on a permitted example withdrawal, you should be in a water system or some similar activity, which generally isn't in your R5 and R20 zone. So I have prepared, based upon our last discussion, an ordinance which would amend, let's go ahead and let me see, there you go. It would amend 17840060, 17850060, 17860060, and 220, which is the district use chart. 40s are R1, 50s are R5, and 60 is R20. If adopted, what it would do is amend the language. You want to go to the attachment A. It would amend the language in 40, which is R1, to state multifamily structures are allowed by conditional use permit. Intensity will be determined by the source of potable water in Okinawan County Health District Standards for onsite treatment. Oh, excuse me, 17850, which is R5, is simply removes the allowance. When you go down to 60, which is the R20, it does the same thing. Now, it doesn't mean it necessarily closes, well, I mean, let me first make the distinction that multifamily and farmworker housing are treated differently in your code. So it doesn't preclude farmworker housing if it meets that definition. That's a different discussion altogether. The multifamily would be conditional use permit in the R1 zone, and it would be not permitted or not conditional use in the R5 or R20 prohibited in the language of our district use chart. Doesn't mean you couldn't do it. It would necessitate a rezone to plan development or R1 if that's compatible or something similar to that. So it'd be more process. Obviously, the, the criteria for review would be, does that intensity of development belong in that particular area? This was my interpretation of what the commissioners were interested in considering. The ordinance is prepared. It would adopt this, and you don't necessarily have to do it this way. We can remand it without your action to the planning commission. If you adopt it as an interim control, it goes into effect immediately. We will set a public hearing, and there's a space in the ordinance to do that to comply with the procedural requirements of 3670-795. Then, based upon your action, the conclusion of your hearing would be repealed or go back or transmitted to the planning commission for their consideration. Now, there's, going back to the ordinance, if you would. Go ahead and scroll down. Now, we're scrolling up, right?
Down.
Down, this is down. Okay, let's scroll down. Keep going. There, right there. Interestingly enough, the 2014 comprehensive plan does support your action. It doesn't say it as strongly as perhaps someone like it to, but in addition, such controls identify requirements to ensure that proposed new development will meet state and local requirements for available water supplies, particularly exempt wells, capacity of the area for onsite septic facilities, and the availability of the community to provide adequate levels of public services, conservation of potential resource lands, critical areas as required by law. So this is right, it's right out of your 2014 comprehensive plan, which is the one on the books, valid upon adoption, valid until invalidated. So it does support this action if it be your finding that that level of intensity throughout all three of those zones is not consistent with your comprehensive plan.
I, I think that what you're stating is correct. I don't think, the zoning that we have today is certainly not perfect, but it's something that we have to address now, and I, I agree with it, what you're saying. It's not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So let's work backwards, just so everybody that's sitting out here knows what we're talking about. So in the R20, 20 acre zone, it's been determined that the density of people in there is conducive to 20 acre parcels. So very low density. Yeah, I can put a house on it and I can put an ancillary dwelling so long as I have potable water. What's the definition of an ancillary dwelling, just so I'm sure of?
Probably a secondary home?
Is that a second home? And does it have to be in a certain distance from the other one? Is that it?
Well, the Met-Ha Review District, yes. In R1, R5, R20, I don't believe it does.
No.
It's just a second residential structure.
Second residential structure, right. So in the, in the 20 acres right now, if we were to adopt this this way, you could have two residential structures on 20 acre parcel.
Correct.
When we go to the fives, same thing. You could have two residential structures on a 5 acre parcel.
Correct.
When we go to the ones, you could actually have multifamily dwellings on it, but it would have to be a conditional use permit if we adopt it.
If you adopt it this way. That's correct.
I believe, I mean, that, if you've zoned it to five acres, you've already understood that your density is not such that it's going to support one acre zone. I mean, that's going to be one acre zone. So why be able to put on a 5 acre parcel, five multifamily houses on that 5 acre parcel, when you've already said that you can only put a house in an ancillary dwelling?
Actually, it's five multifamily dwelling units per acre.
Oh, per acre, that's right. So 25, I'm sorry, 25.
In the, in the five and the 20 acre zone.
Right. So, I, I mean, to me, I, I know this is not going to be perfect because I know there's going to probably be some 5 acre parcels where people won't put, you know, duplexes or something like that, so. That would be the only thing that I'm kind of mulling around in my head is how do you get to, I, I know you talked about a rezone, but if you're out on an island, I mean, if you're out on an island or, or if you're out in that R5 and you got a good place to, to do something like that, should you have the opportunity? I don't, I don't know. I mean, I have an argument both ways.
One of the, and then this is, this has been a debate, it's probably long before I got here, but certainly since I've been here, and part of, in my opinion, part of the challenges we've had wrestling with the zone code and the map is the concern that, that something might be okay somewhere. And I mean, I embrace it. I get that. But unfortunately, that was, that is what, under the old minimum requirement district, has led us to some of the challenges we have now. Rather than being driven by the, the consideration of your transportation grid, water, and those sorts of things, it, it's, it's more the election of the landowner, and I'm a property rights guy. Obviously, no one will, will recoil in horror or surprise when they hear me say that, however. You can create tools for that one spot where it might actually work. If you, and then moral of the story, if where you are, you couldn't obtain a rezone to plan development or R1, it's probably because it's not a good spot to do it.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of the, the cat, or the, lost my word here, but anyway, if, if, if it's a good place, you can probably get the necessary zoning to do it. If it's not a good place, that's why you're not supposed to do it there. So, I mean, we can certainly, now, now, keep in mind, let's discuss process. If the commissioners elect to adopt this as an interim control, I will probably not put it on a separate track to the planning commission or advise them of the action that's been taken. They're going to pick up the zone code anyway.
Yes.
When we're done with the comprehensive plan, so there's no real, from their, or at least my perspective on their behalf, there's no reason to send these all in on separate tracks. The water availability study area, that's a different discussion. They need to review that separately. But your interim controls can remain in place for six months. They can be extended for another six by simply conducting another public hearing. And you can designate the planning commission to do that. So if you elect to take this action, this is some other actions we've talked about, my approach would be to package those up, put them in front of the planning commission when they pick up the review of the zone code, which they will have to do upon adoption of new comprehensive plan.
And the comprehensive plan should have some language in it that kind of guides this more of a, I don't know if I want to use streamline, but it is streamlined because it's, I, I don't like to have a zoning code out there that says, you can do this, but we have no idea how it's going to go. I mean, I mean, that happens a lot anyway, but if you do that.
The right to ask, I refer to.
Yes, it's basically what it is, and I think just perfecting the zoning to some degree would make development in this county a lot more, I would say, friendly. It's, again, I, I, there's nothing I hate more than to have to go through a process with somebody that you say, yes, you can do this, or maybe you can do this. It's going to be difficult for you to do it. We'll wait and see what we see at the end. You take $800 to do a permit, you know, and it's like, so throw your $800 down and we'll see what you get.
Roll the dice.
Yeah.
Now, one, and not making a recommendation, but I will make an observation. This particular section of the code has actually become a discussion point in our RIAF 49 watershed plan update.
This, this, this actual.
This particular language in the zone code.
Okay.
By removing it at this juncture, it also removes what has been centerpiece and part of the discussion. Keeping in mind, the planning commission, when they review the zone code, might come up with a different recommendation. So this isn't a forever change necessarily in the code. But I do think it does get to what some have expressed as a concern of the, the potential for vesting in, in certain types of projects that aren't necessarily in keeping with the regulatory climate in place today. Now, that said, I've been here 12 years. I don't think we've ever processed a permit for any development of this sort. So I, I can't suggest, I have a lot of people lined up outside the door hoping this won't happen.
Yeah, and there's, maybe, I think there's some smart people out there. They're probably going, I don't know if that's going to pay off, to attempt to even do that, but yes, I agree. It doesn't make a lot of sense, and there's not a demand. But it could be, you know, in certain circumstances, a, a situation that could be taken advantage of and you'd be going, why, why are they doing this? Because they can.
Now, there has been some farmworker housing processed through the state that, that I would call multifamily, but again, that's regulated differently in your zone.
It seems to me that process is also focusing on a little more practicality in terms of where they're located.
On site for seasonal houses, workers, that sort of thing. It's a different, entirely different project type.
So do we need, we need an ordinance number on here if we're going to adopt this as interim controls? Is that true?
Need an ordinance number, and you would need to choose your public hearing date and time. If you were to adopt it today, publication could be next Wednesday. We generally allow at least 10 days to your public hearing, so now we're at probably the third Monday in June. Does that sound about right, for the board?
Some, let me make sure. I got the process down time-wise. We do this, we have to set a public hearing within the next 60 days.
60 days.
And then at the end of that public hearing, we can either not decide that we would want to remove the interim controls, go back to what we were doing.
Correct.
Or we could transmit it to the planning commission for further review.
If you leave them in place, they go to the planning.
They go to the planning commission.
If you repeal it, you're back to point of begin.
Point of begin, okay. So we got nine, is our ordinance number nine?
Nine would be the ordinance number, 2019-9.
So I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-9 as interim controls. Motion, second discussion? Motion, second discussion.
Yeah, public hearing date, commissioners?
No.
June, June seventeenth, one thirty.
And that would be inserted in your last ordained.
And this would be the zone code amendment.
Yeah, June seventeenth, at.
One thirty.
One thirty P M. So I would amend my motion to include the time and date of the public hearing, June seventeenth at one thirty P M. Correct in the motion?
Okay, motion second, discussion on the amendment. Bearing all papers.
Right. So, any further discussion on the original motion? Hearing all papers.
Aye. One of the other items, commissioners, that you have talked about, now, and it's come up in a number of different forums, if you will. Let's go to the zone. Now, one of the things that in the environmental impact statement, we're of course recognizing is of the RIAs in Oakenon County, they all present a little different scenario. Forty-eight, you have each of the seven individual reaches with the two CFS reserve in place in terms of potable water supply. In RIAA forty-nine, you don't have that. And in fact, you're in the beginning stages of a watershed plan update to deal for those very issues. So we're right now operating, uh, under the, if you will, interim controls given us by E S S B sixty ninety-one. Of course, fifty, fifty-one, two, the others, um, how many did we decide we have? Of the, two, three, four, five, eight RIAs that have some portion in Oakenon County, uh, other than, I think, forty-seven. I don't believe any of the others have an upstream flow rule. So we're operating under essentially ninety, forty, four oh five oh. And we're also, to a point, tag teaming, uh, with the counties with which we share those water resource inventory area. But one of the areas that we have drilled in on is that lower Metow reach base.
I was going to ask Andy, Andrew, you put your cursor over there on the twist, where the twist river comes in, you know where, yep, right there. Okay, so this is the problem. From there, clear down to the mouth is the lower Metow reach. So above that line, there's six of them. So from there up, there's six reaches. From there down, there's only one.
So in the, in the entirety of the lower Metow reach, uh, doing the math, the existing parcels, the existing parcels that aren't developed, and the potential for new lots allowed by the underlying zoning, uh, you will likely outstrip the two CFS reserves should all of that occur. You're on the line if even the undeveloped parcels build out. But certainly with the new lot creation, you will probably, assuming everybody builds and all of those other, uh, kind of best guesses, uh, you'll outstrip your reserve. The Metow Review District, as you know, has a different blend of zoning and different zone designations than does the rest of the county. So what we're talking about is that part of the lower reach from the edge of the Metow Review District down to the mouth there at the Columbia.
Not quite the mouth.
Well, not quite the mouth, but, but, I mean, in terms of what you're looking at on the map. Now, based upon the discussions that commissioners have had so far, why don't you go to that quick table? In that lower part of the Metow reach, outside of the Metow Review District, you have nine hundred ninety-four parcels currently in the rural one zone. Of that, seven hundred and sixty-eight parcels are outside of what will likely be the expansion areas for Pateras and Brewster, and there's that strip of land in between, which, if subdivided, could create to the one acre density, could create eleven thousand nine hundred ninety-four new lots. If the seven hundred and sixty-eight parcels, and actually, the expansion area, Pateras and Brewster, and outside of that area in connectivity with Columbia River. That's a map the Department of Ecology has given us.
Do you have them have it, not just so people can see what they've sent?
Uh, I don't believe we have that on here, no.
I could go get it.
Can you get, can you get email?
I can go get it if you'd like.
Would you go get it?
Yeah.
Because obviously you've got people here recording, and people there taking notes and stuff like that, and just make sure you put up all the information.
So, taking, and Andrew will go get that, taking the line below which, if you will, any exempt well, any wells, but a permit exempt well is a subject of discussion, would be drawing from the Columbia, as opposed to drawing from RIAA forty-eight, from the Metow River Basin. So the seven hundred and sixty-eight parcels in R one that are neither in the expansion areas of Pateras and Brewster or in the area in connectivity with Columbia, uh, if they were subdivided, if they were re-designated as rural five lot, three hundred and fifty-three of those could be further subdivided to two thousand, two hundred seventy-five new lots. Still a respectable number of lots, but obviously a fraction of the eleven thousand nine hundred ninety-four.
And that doesn't take into account steep slopes or.
No.
Unbuildable property.
Pure math, pure math.
That's just pure math.
Yeah, it would be difficult to do that, because there's steep slope areas that you can still build, it just depends on what the nature of the place is.
But what I'm saying is, that's a wrong, wrong.
Worst, or I guess eye of the beholder, best case scenario. So, uh, the, the, the discussion the commissioners have had is whether the rural one zoning in those areas outside Pateras and Brewster expansion area, and outside of the connected area with Columbia River are appropriate in light of the, the challenges that we're already anticipating with the two CFS reserve in the lower Metow reach. Observations.
One acre zoning does not, I mean, by state standards, I don't even think you can put a well and a sewer system on a one acre zone, on a one acre parcel if you're trying to build a grid. It's pretty tough.
Yeah.
But, so, I would favor going to five acre zoning in the lower Metow. If we had a way for people to be able to, um, to create a subdivision of property. What I mean by that is, if I got a twenty acre parcel, I, that means I can get four fives out of it.
Correct.
So if we have a cluster ordinance or a subdivision tool or something, and, and did you call Kitas County and ask them about their card?
Uh, that, no, it wasn't Kitas, it was the other one. And yes, we did, we did pull that up for you.
Okay.
We, uh, can give that to you.
What did that look like exactly? It was kind of like what I'm talking about, where it's net density.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a cluster ordinance. It, um, it's crafted a bit differently than the one we were, were working with locally here in Oakenon County. The, the end result is remarkably different. But it is crafted a bit differently, and I've been hurt back from Kitas County yet. And you, and you have some, some tools on the books now. If you're in a five acre zone, and you have at least ten acres, twice the underlying lot size, you're going to apply for a plan development. And the plan development allows the reduction in parcel size, uh, in exchange for open space in a certain type of configuration. Uh, so, you see, I already have one tool on the books now. Uh, the cluster, again, the cluster didn't survive, uh, the analysis when we were going back through the twenty sixteen effort. But, uh, but we are, we are putting, we'll put together that card approach. And it was Scagit County, I believe it was. Um, I said, so wait for Kitas County, and, and then we'll pull up the, the records on our old, our old effort.
I want to be sure that some, like, if I got a, if I own a farm, and I want to bark off one or two acres for myself and sell the rest of the farm. I want to be able to do, I want to be able to have people do that. But your net density has to be such that you, you know, if you have twenty acres, there's going to be, you know, four parcels on it, whatever size they may be.
That was one of the things that that, the card, as they called it, the card approach did. Uh, I can't speak to what Kitas County currently has on the book, but, but certainly perhaps a better job than what we were looking at in that, the, the cluster ordinance we were looking at was more of a wholesale kind of an approach. You were doing a project and setting up density bonuses. And it was actually, it's not remarkably different from the plan development approach on the books now, except to push the zoning out. You could just do a subdivision without changing underlying permitted uses and that sort of thing. The, the card approach did, at least, again, my, my initial review of it, did allow for, I'll call it a one-time split, for lack of a better way to refer to it. But it was an approach where you could bark off a less, lesser sized lot than the underlying zone would allow, uh, under particular circumstances. So, and it, it was not right on the mark, but it was in keeping with the discussion the commissioners have had before, recognizing that sometimes the desire for the one acre zoning is not because you want to split your twenty acres into twenty lots, because you want to take your twenty acres and knock off two and a half, which is your house and your barn and your machine shed, you know, whatever, garden spot, and then sell the rest of the hayfield or the orchard or something, uh, as a unit. And it did have provisions allowed for that sort of thing. So we'll package that all up and get it to the commissioners.
But this concept, the concept of breaking off a smaller lot that's allowed in the zoning district is different than any cluster ordinance.
It is, it is.
That's not what it is, it's not even.
That, that's not a cluster, it did just more of a.
It's an exception.
An exception, one-time split, uh, some, some, Kitas County in way years past had a provision for one-time split. It didn't, it didn't pass subsequent review because it spoke to family members and, you know, it actually created kind of.
To deal with.
Kind of a protected classification, which is problematic under equal protection standards. So whatever we come up with would have to be universally applicable, uh, under a prescribed set of circumstances, aside from family members or something like that, so. This is the line that.
Can you zoom out on that?
Mm-hmm.
So everything to the right of that dashed line, DOE sent a report that said that it is not in hydraulic continuity with the main stem of Metow.
So moral of the story, you're still using water, obviously, but you're not using water. That's part of that two CFS reserve calculation.
Right. Looks like that's.
So did you take that into consideration when you did those numbers on the, on?
The ones we just had up on the board takes that into account, right.
So if we left the underlying zoning in all of that area, they have water. Also Brewster and Pateras can supply water. It's septic to a lot of those places, allowing for higher density.
Yeah, closer in. It's interesting, because they would probably be more, it would be more favorable development upstream from Metow than it would up Watson Dr. or.
Yeah, it's Watson Dr.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's pretty steep in there. Maybe you already have that one development that, uh, the Cornwalllands, yeah?
Silver Spurs, no. Yeah, Silver Spurs was up there.
No, 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 it's just, I, I, oh, yeah, the one up, uh. Wells Road or? Yeah, no, it's, uh, Jack Wells Road is, uh.
I know it's weird to tell you.
What is that road? Bill Shaw Road.
Bill Shaw Road, yeah.
Yeah. But have you, I mean, have you driven up there lately? There's only like one house on that.
I know, on that part of the thing.
Yeah. So it's not exactly a growing concern? No, it's not, but there's an awful lot of steep ground on that.
Why don't you go back to the zone then? So, I'm still on the, for a good pointer.
And those are fives and tens. See, then, if we, if we were to think about changing all of the R one, I really don't see any viable use for R one in that. No. If we were to change all of that, that was on, left of the, left of that.
Just, uh, okay, go ahead. So that, the, the land in, if you go back to that table that we did, that showed the different lots that exist and that could be created, it excludes, all of this is R one here, and it excludes that, because that's in that area between Brewster and Pateras, arguably part of their expansion area, certainly under the influence.
That could be R one, I mean, that's, that's not.
And I'm having a little trouble responding from here, but right, right about in this neighborhood.
Now, for, a little bit further, oh, yeah, no, you're right, that's where we're going.
Right about in here, that, and actually would be on the upstream, if you will, boundary, have the Alta Lake subdivisions, because that's already been divided, it's already redacted. All the way up to the edge of the Metow Review District is the R one zoning that we're talking about. And that's what that table was calculated on.
I was trying to think of another, it's Bill Shaw Road, there's another road out there that has some segmentation throughout. It does have houses.
Bill Shaw does, uh, and then, uh.
Which the one we.
The one that goes up past Moses, that we just didn't page.
Right, yes. Indian Dan Dan.
That's outside of that, uh, I think that's Indian Dan Dan.
Would you put that map up that showed that line again?
I can hear mine, you're probably right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect, this proposal wouldn't affect anything.
More road names than maps, no?
Yeah, so Indian Dan Dan.
Yeah, it is, okay.
So, based upon the discussions commissioners have had, I have prepared an ordinance, I do not have the attachment yet. They're still perfecting the map. So we know where that line would fall, which I can then put in front of the commissioners if you wish to review that. Again, your options are to, to adopt it in interim control and then transmit it to the planning commission, or, uh, you could transmit it on a separate course to the planning commission. Uh, they likely won't review it for a bit. So if you wanted, um, a more recent or, or sooner effective date, uh, probably the interim control is the reasonable approach to take. But again, I don't, I don't have the attachment at this point, we just ran out of time.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see the attachment before we adopt something else, for sure.
That would be, be a critical part.
Does Pateras and, um, Brewster's, um, city expansion area, where's the division between those approximately?
Uh, you know, I don't recall, commissioner.
And so are they, but they're pretty much going in the, in the valley, right? I mean, they're not trying to, I'm thinking about what kind of infrastructure that they actually would. actually would be likely to provide.
You, you have.
Well, what, see, the other thing too, though.
I can't really see it.
Is that, now that water gets regulated under the Office of Columbia River. So theoretically, somebody could apply for a water right down there for, well, didn't Patterson Brewster both get some of that, uh, Salt Lake or Salt Lake?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they had part of that water. Uh, but, and then down there, you could apply for a Class B system, sure, and actually, if the city wanted to, they could bring it into their portfolio, it was municipal water supply.
And they'd just have to.
I don't know how that process goes, all I'm saying is that theoretically that could.
They just, they, they put it in a plan and it's their water service area, and then, you know, they're making a commitment when they do that, um, the commitment doesn't go much further than what they're able to provide today in infrastructure, but it says we will if somebody builds that infrastructure, including that, but typically it wouldn't be them. But then if somebody did say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build a water line or a U water line from here to here.
How about that, right down there is gonna be those, that tiny house project?
Yeah, they, I don't think they, I mean, I don't see them serving, the city serving that, it's, it's because of the elevation unless they were, that would be one way out there.
The, the one thing about this is that there's a line that was created by someone else that involved, you know, DOE, that because our water and our land use is tied, you can't have one without the other, it's chicken and egg. This is, I think, a good dividing line for an area that could be served by municipal water supplies and is not regulated under in-stream flows, um, of 173540.
I agree that within that area, you could do more in that way, I'm not saying I, you know, because the area is pretty big, relatively speaking, and yet, I wouldn't say that it dictate one type of zoning, you could have two or three types of zoning, that's the tools we don't have.
True.
I mean, we're very limited with, we got.
But right now, today, we're just talking about going from that line right there north to the three fif, the school district three fifty line, change R1 to the R5.
Yeah, the focus is, I'm, in the past discussion, and certainly we've talked about one acre zoning throughout county, but, uh, the discussion we focused on here was the, the challenges with that lower Met How region.
Right.
And the two CFS reserves, so this discussion would be more targeted, if you will, to that. So, if the commissioners are interested in reviewing that ordinance, uh, I'll fast-track the map and we can put it in front of you for consideration.
I'm interested in it.
I like looking at maps.
Very, very good.
Especially if you can read the road names up.
Then we will move ahead then with that. Uh, I think that was what I wanted to chat about under the banner of the update for the Conferency Plan Commissioners. Moving to the RIAF forty-nine watershed plan, uh, the technical advisory group did meet last week, uh, they are, they, they put a, a finishing, the finishing touch on the project list and actually, uh, many of the, the individual projects, in fact, all the individual projects, uh, got pushed off to the side for further discussion down the road. They were looking more at analysis and, and one of the things they have focused on, uh, would be an analysis, not remarkably dissimilar from what we were talking about doing, uh, similar to the modeling aspect consulting did. So, uh, we're actually monitoring that, see what opportunity there is to make sure we don't, um, not cross purposes, but redundancies, maybe a better way to say it, so we can get the most efficiency for what money is available. Then they were also talking about kind of a basin, uh, sort of specific analysis, trying to identify which basins would have a higher priority for projects, now whether that be on a basis of, for instance, how much actual habitat you might be able to make available or where there's a greater water stress, the, the discussion of scene, of water rights came into the discussion, uh, there's still some mixed views on that, certainly from my perspective, senior water rights or any water rights that are senior to permit exempt wells at any rate, uh, are an important part of the Conferency Plan discussion, because we have to take that into account. Whether it is under the banner of the RIAF forty-nine update, uh, there's, there's mixed opinions on that, some are drilling in on the very specific language of the statute, which says permit exempt wells, in-stream flow, make it work. It didn't really include a discussion of water rights, but some elements of the advisory group and certainly some elements of the planning unit, I suspect, will want to, to take a look at that as well, so. That, anyway, that was the, the cut and thrust of the discussion, they will have a report to the planning unit at their June sixth meeting.
So that endeavor will continue on beyond this date that we're trying to satisfy to see if there's opportunities, yes.
That, and I, for the sake of, of those listening, we've got to make that point clear, that the project list, if you will, that the advisory group's discussing isn't the final formal, was taking the plan, we're a long ways away from that. What they were doing, are doing, is looking to try to identify if there's a particular project or a particular process or something that would lend itself to request for some additional funding that apparently is available, but it has to be in by June thirty, so, they were looking for some, some low hanging fruit, if you will, that they could grab and get in to request for the next funding cycle. So that's, that's what this process is all about, the, the ongoing list of, of projects and mitigations and all of that is, is in its very beginning statements.
What came about with that request for the three, four groups to be added to the, to the technical, but the, what came about with the request for the four groups to be added to the technical?
We didn't discuss that at the advisory group meeting, they had put it on their agenda, so we didn't touch bases on that, Craig wasn't there, so I didn't get a chance to touch bases with him. Uh, the people that, well, that's not true, one, well, two, two of the folks, three, I guess technically, if we count you and I, of the folks that were suggested for membership were there, anyway, uh, were there, were there last time too, so, I'll, I'll touch bases with Craig and see what, what the motivation was.
The advisory group doesn't even vote, I mean.
They do not.
That's not the nature.
The, the operating procedures were clear, their, their advisory to the planning unit and the assignment they're working on now was given them by the planning unit, so, but I'll, I'll, I'll bring that around full circle, permission? Code enforcement update, um, the cabin is gone, so that's what we've been working on for a couple of years now, or at least they sent pictures that the cabin was gone.
They didn't Photoshop it, just airbrushed it or anything?
I'll, I'll go up and see if, I'm sure I'll hear, I'll hear soon enough if the cabin's gone.
Didn't flag them once away.
Yeah, no, didn't do that, for sure.
So, uh, check one, I was up at the salvage yard again last week, um, there's attorneys involved now, so we're working on, uh, doing something with it, I, I gave him to the end of the week to get that front end cleaned up again, uh, I'll go back up and see if he accomplished that, it's probably as bad as it's been, it was looking better there for a while, but, uh.
Dave's active management, I don't think he's got it.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I get part of the problem, and I mean, he, he would just have to be more aggressive in repairing it, but while I was standing there, two pickup trucks came in with stuff, and they didn't even stop at the gate. They just went back and never came out, so I don't know if they dropped it or flattened all the tires or what happened back up in there, but, um, it, 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 no control over what's going into that thing at all, so we'll see what we can do with that. At, I'll have to sit down and talk with Dave, I, I, obviously we can shut it down, but that won't necessarily stop people from taking things in and dumping them off, uh, I can try to, to, I can try, I can, I can issue an order, but he can't take anymore in, that he can only get rid of things, see how that works.
Couldn't they crush a bunch of that stuff, like, the car crusher, like what Randy did a while ago?
Well, according to the story, no one will take it, there, there just isn't the money in, in the commodities, right, in the metals, scrap metal, to make it worthwhile, and I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, you can check with, um, Solid Waste.
Well, that's, that's an idea.
They follow the market really close.
So Randy, no, cause Randy watches it, you know, he doesn't crush until there's a profit there, and he's been crushing for the last month.
Oh, well.
Redder room?
I don't think so, but, I mean, he usually, I mean, he stays right on top of that all the time, he's been shipping.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll check.
Four or five doubles a week.
Yeah, really? Something going on there.
That, the one thing I try to keep in the back of my mind is if, if just shut it down without a, a, some kind of a restoration plan, we're just gonna have mess sitting there for the rest of our natural life, so, I need to figure out what Dave, I mean, I, I know you have declared a nuisance, I know the county could go in and do an abatement, but I have no idea how much money I'd just spend to do that, and, and the, I'm very comfortable with the notion that the value of the real estate will no way pay for the cost of cleanup, it's just, it's just not.
The concern, of course, is, is that if it gets bigger, it, it gets to be a bigger bill too, so.
True, true, it's, it's.
And you've, there's, you know, this isn't the first one that's ever happened in the state of Washington, for sure, but, um.
Well, looking back to that, to that point, doing some research, um, there's still some outstanding issues on the west side with the same part, that have never been.
Ship that's aground someplace.
Yes, yes, one of, one of many, one of many issues that they're still dealing with, so, so, anyway, moral of the story.
It, and it's, it's, it's something that's really hard to break, um, in, in places because, you know, there's a guy taking in metal, he's trying to be in business doing it, and it's not working well, but even in the same neighborhood, you know, there's two or three places that look as bad or worse, and he gets to look, and they're not, and they're not businesses, they're just stack of junk, um, and I'm not thinking about that one old fruit warehouse, they're.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You just gotta, it looks like, you know.
And satellite TV guy.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's as much of a dinosaur as his, except his is right on.
I'm surprised that thing is not burned out.
It looks like there's a big event going on there, except the cars are real rusty.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll go and check with Randy, if scrap prices are up enough, sometimes you can put together some cleanup, cleanup programs and whatnot, spark a little interest. We, we had a couple during my watch in Kitas County, when, when scrap prices went up enough, uh, you could get somebody in, in some cases, they'd give them a case of cars or something like that, they'd go get it, but they would take pretty much any, any relatively clean metal that people would bring to them, bail it and all, nothing, cost and anything to take it in, and then, then they made enough money off the effort to make it worth cooperating, participating in that kind of program. We did that a couple of times way back, um, but of late, nobody wanted to talk about it because the, the prices were way down, but I'll, I'll check and see if maybe they're starting to inch up again, so.
If they put one in the, how big is that lot that he's working on?
Well, the actual permitted site is just that fenced compound, now there's a bunch of stuff up on hillside now.
Cause it'd be, probably be an all right place to run a crusher operation when, um, you know, it was feasible, it's happened up that way before, and it's not very far away, there's a couple of junk carriers with a bunch of cars and they could, might take advantage of the situation, if in fact, scrap metal.
There's enough in that immediate area to keep crusher busy for quite a while, if, if there was somebody who'd go up and do it, and then, then once upon a time, DOE would actually offer grants to help subsidize it, so.
Sometimes solid waste would be the ones that arrange it.
Would know that, right, so let me, let me do some, some additional review on that.
Check with Kent, you know, he might, they're watching the market, they, it wasn't that long ago, they talked about having a metal drive, it's a matter of why, I don't know, I mean, it, that could be that there was, the scrap metal was big to a point where you can make, make a word.
Actually, on the end of the banner of, of unpermitted salvage yards, we did issue a notice for a property up on the ridge line above Poor Man Creek Road, uh, they did respond and were in a compliance plan with that, so, um.
Was that, was that a complaint that you were responding to?
Yes, yes, and then there's a couple of complaints that I've closed out, there doesn't appear to be any foundation to them, that at least I could see, they were anonymous, and I couldn't verify what the folks were seeing and I couldn't see it myself, so. Code enforcement moves along. We did receive, going to your administrative agenda, commissioners, we did receive a proposal, well, you'll recall where we are in the process for the M tank ceiling project, uh, we reviewed this metal for the RFQ, I've gone to Beaman for negotiation, they have sent me a fee schedule, uh, everyone, Tanya, Joe, they're, they're all looking at that, and we'll compare it against what they charge us for the L tank project, if that passes muster, then I'll get a contract from them for your review, and assuming the numbers meet your satisfaction, we'll go and get the contract executed and they can begin the design work for the M tank ceiling project. Champaign Shores, I met with members of the homeowner association last week, um, they do not have, uh, the money to front the design work, they would prefer that that be rolled into the, the LID along with all the other expenses. So, the question then, I first posed, is we need to get the pre-design work done, or not the pre-design, the design work done, so I know how much, we need to issue a bond for, my best estimate is that'll be about a twenty-five thousand dollar bill, the commissioners want me to prepare a budget amendment so I can pay for that out of my professional services line. We were necessary.
Coming from.
You too, yeah.
Infrastructure fund would be the logical candidate, since the, the sewer extension was and still is on the capital facility plan, that's where you're paying the loan payment. We certainly reimburse the infrastructure fund from the proceeds of the bond issue.
Yeah.
So it'd be a, be a front, if you will.
How long would, how long would the front be for?
Oh, let's, I was working on that timeline, uh, late last week, we have to, we have to get the design, we have to do an RFQ to bring in the engineer to do the design work, need to get the design work done, we need to then initiate, once I know what the numbers are, we need to initiate the process for the local improvement district, treasurer's office becomes involved with higher bond council to put together the actual bond issue, we won't have the LID formed until end of this summer, probably, uh, we'll want to time the bond issue so we don't sit on the money too long, where we missed this construction season, so the construction would actually be, uh, early spring next year, before the irrigation comes on, the ground gets wet.
Bid it in the wintertime.
So we, we'll, we'll spend this winter getting the bond issue and, and everything put together, get the bonds sold so we have the money in the bank and then let out the RFP, probably late this, this year, early next.
Dan, when you follow the public works as consulting engineer, they, don't they have Dan Wood and Paul and Public Works is consulting engineer, don't they have one?
I'm sorry?
Does Public Works have a consulting engineer under their RFQ process?
Well, good question. I don't know. Let me ask, let me ask.
Have Parantix?
Yeah, that's for the landfill. I don't know if it was got that broad a scope, but you can check that, too. I thought they had another one, too, but maybe that was... Yeah, you just mentioned Intrix, yeah.
Let me check on that.
Intrix is under, they have Intrix on contract?
They may have in the past.
Because it would just be one if there's one that had an RFQ on it, if it's broad enough.
I can look into that. Then they have a homeowners association meeting on June 29th, which I've committed to attend, answer questions and make sure the support remains in place of the members present. One recognizes that that was the deal, if you will. They get water, they go on the sewer. The other actually believes it's necessary. They're running out of bedrooms, as they refer to it, on their onsite system. They're having some challenges with that, so he recognizes that it's probably inevitable anyway that they'll have to do something with their system, either by way of a major upgrade or ideally just hook to the sewer line and have it over with once and for all. The third, the third member that was there is more in development. He just doesn't really want to spend the money, so, and I understand it. I get that, so...
But if the project wants to put them in the lake, it's be kind of nice to keep the water clean.
Yeah, the project moves ahead, so we've gotten past the first step. Again, back to the question, do the commissioners want me to work on an amendment? We're going to see an amendment from me anyway as I walk in the grant money from the RIOT 49 planning in the process. We have to amend for the additional money we got from the conservation commission for the VSP program. It appears we're going to have some additional money for implementation, so I need to expand my professional services to cover that as well. While I'm doing that, I can do a transfer from infrastructure facts. Those are, because I'm bringing in some revenue we hadn't budgeted.
Oh, for a supplemental?
Right, right, yeah. But I'll double check with Kerry.
For infrastructure fund, we would have to, too, because we have an ending fund balance. We'd have to move it out of any fund balance into an expense line.
I think the infrastructure committee...
Obviously, forty, forty, twenty is the split. Where's, where's the counties? Have we all, both the cities and the counties, committed to certain things? Like county, who's been paying the sewer system payments with the infrastructure fund? So, we've gobbled that far forty percent, I'd take it.
As I recall, the discussion been a bit a few years back now, but I won't suggest everybody necessarily embraced warmly the idea that the Public Works Trust Fund loan would be paid from that.
No.
Since there was no real other alternative at the time.
Right, and everybody understood that, so I guess that's what I'm saying is that there's a, you know, in the actual bond language, you know, it's forty, forty, twenty split, so every time we hit that fund, we must be hitting the emerging opportunity part of it. We're not?
We have not. That's the part that I...
So, we're hitting the forty percent county allocation.
For the PWTF.
Yeah, because, you know, that did, yeah, no, no, I know we're using that for it, but I didn't know, we're using all the forty percent, aren't we?
I have not made that calculation in quite some time.
We should see that we are on that.
That, and then pay for design and everything else out of the proceeds of the bond. That, well, it has the potential to be a little sloppier, because if you call it short, then you got to come up with the money to capitalize project from somewhere.
You want to make sure you call it long.
If you call it long, then you just have to deal with those excess revenues in such a manner that you don't run afoul of the IRS and have to be taxed on it, things like that.
So, who's up, what's the infrastructure committee made up of?
It's made up of a group of members of the economical alliance.
So, we got...
The executive committee is a player there, but there's an infrastructure committee designated. Can't remember who the chair is now.
We got a hundred, I mean, we got a hundred thousand budgeted to Alliance 2005. That's the economical alliance. Twenty thousand budgeted to Stampede. And we got a debt issue cost of $600. We got the geo-bond transfer of $241,000. And then the transfer out to 410 for the Public Works Trust Fund loan of $211,000. And we have, City of Oma, we budgeted $20,000 for them for New Year's. And so, we have any fund balance in there of $445,432, of which two payments are held up. Well, that suggests your ending fund balance. We have the expenses out of there are $592,600 for a total of $1,380,000 of expenses.
We know this takes the balance.
Two times the bond payment, is that right?
Yeah, in the, in the reserve beginning.
Well, if we're going to, but if we're going to take $25,000 out and repay it with the bond. That way, or we can do it on a current expense and repay it.
I do like the idea, if we can afford to do it, to do the, just do the design first and then get an accurate figure.
Still has a potential.
Other current expense?
No, I don't know, infrastructure fund, if we got it. But that takes a little bit of analysis. It's always, you know, it's not straightforward where that works.
We're, we're right at two times the bond payment that she likes, and I don't, I think that the treasurer would...
Well, I think it's kind of, it was part of the bond language, in fact.
Anyway, one thing to keep in mind, and you always want to be careful about projecting too far ahead, but if the LID, we get it all done, constructed, part of the, the LID is payment of all the connection fees as well, so you'll pick up a hundred thousand or so, a bit better than that in terms of connection fees. That would go then to the...
Is there twenty-eight connections or twenty-five?
It'd be twenty-nine, and actually, the deal, if you will, the discussion...
Oh, they used to pay the loan off.
Yeah, so there's an effect there.
Wouldn't pay the loan off.
No, 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 I said goes to a...
Much as I would like to dream of that. But it will, it will be a substantial part of, probably not, maybe the 2020 payment.
I think we should bring the, I think this should come up in our finance committee. I wish.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yeah. Yeah, at 10.
Very good.
When's that bond data?
A while.
Thirty-two?
Twenty, thirty-two, I think.
Yeah, I think it's thirty, at least.
No, you got like twenty, yeah, thirty-two, thirty-five, something. We extended it to thirty years.
No, no, that's the, that's the, I mean, it's trust fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The bond, I was asking about the bond work, Anna. That's who we bonded the .08 income, it was .08 at the time, and...
This, your money came a lot, wasn't that the...
Could you get close on that?
Getting close, I think.
I thought it was, is that the bond for the, I don't know, it paid off last year?
No, it's a bond for, they just put, the .08 came in, they bonded it for twenty years. And that was helpful in terms of making sure the legislature didn't cut us off on those rural lands, rural counties' monies. And that, that had played into it, and it was like, oh, look at all these counties that bonded that. And so, we took the income, bonded it, and did projects with it, essentially is what we did. And that, when those are paid off, that bond's paid off, that's substantial, I guess.
Well, when we refinanced the Public Worker Trust Fund loan, I was the one that instigated the whole thing.
I know. You're not going to be around one with data.
He's a pipe, no, no, no. And then, then we came, we went for a bond rating, yeah, and got a good one and refinanced all of that. That was $300,000 bucks, I'd say.
Who's on there? Is that Hetzel's on there?
Yeah, yeah, Hetzel's the head, she's the chair.
Well, further the discussion then. I hired to amend the Okinawan County Code, dealing with that sort of thing. You instructed her to come and chat with me about it, and we have been. We pulled the different documents that we can find. I think we have them all. As I've pieced together the history, and some of this you may already know, the state, of course, way back in 1919 or so, gave the counties the authority to create weed districts, noxious weed districts, and Okinawan County apparently did that. Then it was 1969, I believe, when the state went from the statutory authorities for weed districts and formed noxious weed boards. Now, they formed the noxious weed boards in all of the counties. Then the counties had the option of activating them. And Okinawan County activated their noxious weed board. The piece that I'm still trying to sort through is the noxious weed board was activated. The statute said the weed districts in effect until that time, until they were dissolved. I can't find any indication that the county went through the steps to dissolve the weed district, which would have required an election. Now, I'm going to read it all through again, just to make sure I haven't cued in on the wrong key points. But anyway, you have two code sections in your Okinawan County Code, one noxious weed board, one weed district. I'm going to suggest to Anna that what we do is repeal both of those and just write a code section that does what she needs it to do in accordance with the statutes regarding noxious weed boards. So, we're working on that. I have a draft ordinance up. I need to figure out if the county missed that step somewhere in the past, and if they did, doesn't matter. Find the answers out to that. We'll be back with the proposal. That's your agenda, commissioners, anything for me?
They haven't submitted a condition use permit yet, application for the landfill.
I have not.
I'm just thinking about the things we still got. I don't know if that's on your plate. I think that's on Ken's plate.
I asked Josh about it a couple of weeks ago, and he was going to look into it. I haven't heard that.
I mentioned it to Ken a little while back, and he said there was some minor staff who was hoping about, I can't remember where it was, but I don't remember where they are now. And then how are you doing on kind of assessing what we might do with the original?
You know, I haven't talked to the mayor about that in recent history. I'll make a point to try to track him down and do that.
I think they decided to put, just speaking more of all, they decided to put fifty cents on the EMS levy.
That was probably good.
Then, on another note, I guess, I cranked out a draft resolution for Mike Gordon. I believe he has agenda time tomorrow to talk to you about the two tents. Communications tax, if I remember right. So, I assume we'll probably... I assume he'll chat with you about it then.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else, commissioners? Very good.